For the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Hammel, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Basil?
Here.
Mrs. Bytes, here. Mrs. Duncan. Mrs. Hammel, here. Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Raskin. Mr. Dowski. And Mr. Martino.
Here. Under announcements, we have two agenda edits. Under item 12, letter B, three, extracurricular, letter A, we're removing the item of Terrence Henderson, indoor percussion director, effective January 28, 2014. And under agenda item 12B4, substitute staff, we're adding Joseph Torshia, secondary principal of social studies.
Student government.
Sorry?
Student government moving up.
Moving student government up.
Oh, yeah, and we're moving, excuse me, we're moving student government up from...
Section 8B.
9D. 9D up to...
Up to where?
7C.
We're moving the student government item from 9D to 7C. Are there any other agenda edits?
I didn't see out here any kind of motion to appoint a secretary for the board.
I didn't have Dr. Sankar put it on because Mrs. Hammel is still effectively the board secretary, and we have not yet voted to accept her resignation. So the vacancy doesn't necessarily exist, and I figured...
Is that, do we really want to do it under new business?
Well, do we need to do it tonight, is what I'm saying. I mean, the vacancy doesn't exist yet, and we have three board members missing.
Yeah, I guess we can wait.
Yeah, I mean, unless, unless the board members here actually want to be board secretary, we could vote on it.
I mean, I'll do it. The position I haven't held yet, and Monica's sort of flipping in on all the roles and views of, plus this board president has some experience working with us on the show, so I'm happy to do it. But if we want to wait until everybody's here to vote on it, I'm happy to wait.
Oh, no, I didn't realize you were willing to do it. I knew you were the alternate, I didn't know you wanted to do it permanently.
It's not like I'm passionate for it, but I'm happy, somebody has to do it, so I'm happy.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with voting? Okay, we could add that under new business, we'll vote on it tonight. The procedures for public participation are on the inside of the blue cover of the agenda. Are there any presentations by the public on agenda items?
I can't hear you.
Is this on?
Yeah, it's on, yeah.
Mr. Templeton, excuse me, one minute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
First thing I was going to say, the last board meeting was wonderful, the second one, this one's not too good. Very temple, 2032 East Main Street, even thousands of others. Question on financial 11H on the herbivore project. I was looking at the, and it was stating that the cafeteria was at $15,000 in the red. Apparently Sedexo has been telling their employees ever since beginning of the year that they are $158,000 in the red. Now, I would like to know where the other $148,300 in the red has disappeared to? Or is Sedexo giving the employees ill information?
Mr. Templeton, I personally haven't heard Sedexo say that, so I don't know where that number's coming from. We do have the auditor coming to the finance committee meeting.
Apparently not anymore.
Oh, not anymore?
There's a conflict, I guess, in their schedule.
We will look into it.
We'll look into that. I do not know that there is a difference of $143,000.
They're outside the effort words, and they didn't want to, didn't seem to come back to their employees. And while I'm stating about Sedexo, you know, we are the only school in the county, probably other counties, that have outside food for them coming in to manage our food services. And I suggest we look into getting it back in-house, because I don't think we're doing what we should be doing with this Sedexo. I think it's detrimental way we're going to want to be with our finances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Templeton.
Oh, one more thing. The tax referendum that I was talking about, on the, on the committee of overview, it's not one that's our party, did you decide to put that away, Simon?
There are two resolutions tonight. One is to, one is to opt into the Act One Index, the other is to opt out of the Act One Index. I don't know that we're even considering a referendum.
If we do decide to want to put the taxes on prior, I would hope to, putting it on as a vote, I would hope that we would be doing it for the sake of our senior citizens, barely holding on to their health, so is it is, to do it for the sake of education, not for the sake of not having people pay for their children to play a play. Because I think that would be very hard for the senior citizens of our community to spend a lot more taxes just to keep a ball going up and down the field. I think it's a whole lot, lot better for the students to know how to be letting or lettering on them all than to know how to throw it up and down the field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Templeton?
Yes?
Just so you're aware, tonight, we're not voting on whether or not we're going to raise taxes or not raise taxes. Tonight is just the, a vote to decide whether or not, if the school district were to raise taxes, whether or not we would limit the ability of the school district to raise taxes only to the Act One Index, or to exceed that and ask for two special exceptions to the Act One Index and allow us to raise taxes a little bit higher than that. But there's no vote tonight to raise taxes or not raise taxes, as it relates to this budget.
Okay, well, please keep in mind that our senior citizens are not in good shape out there for financial health.
Thank you.
I'm not one of them, yet, I just look like one of them.
Are there any other public comments on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to recognition for January. Item 7A is the Daniel Boone High School bioreactor green team. Dr. Sankar?
Thank you very much. I'm going to refer this to Mr. Henkel, who is going to begin the presentation to discuss the green team and the success of the green team. Mr. Henkel, would you come to the microphone, please?
Actually, I'm going to leave the discussion of the green team to Mr. Halsner and Farber. But one thing, we've had a lot of great things happen by school over the last few months, and the green team has brought our school and our school district a great deal of positive recognition, and actually some financial rewards also, in travel, essentially over the state to Lees, to Harrisburg, in Washington DC. But we'd kind of like to give Halsner and Farber, who are also in the green team, a little bit of...
Hi, Gaby, thank you for inviting us here this evening. Just wanted to take a couple minutes to, first of all, thank the school board, Assistant Assistant Superintendent Sankar, Assistant Assistant Superintendent Mary Beth Torshia, and Mr. Henkel for allowing us to pursue this project and supporting us on this project. I just wanted to give a brief idea, as much as possible, of what these kids have accomplished in the last few months. First of all, they have met with Pennsylvania Representatives Maloney and Ed Nielsen from Philadelphia area. They met with both Pennsylvania Centers Judith Schwenk and John C. Rafferty. They presented their research before Lieutenant Governor Jim Colley. They received a letter of commendation from Governor Tom Corbett. They entertained US Congressman Jimmy Gerlach, who came in and actually installed the algae bio-reactor lab in the high school itself. They received letters of commendation from US Congressman Patrick Meahan, received commendation letters from US Senator Pat Dooley, received commendation letters from US Senator Robert P. Casey. They also received staff members from both those senators' offices in the labs, they wanted to get a firsthand look at what the students were doing in the labs. Also, they received commendations from Delaware Senator Chris Coons, and they presented their research in Senator Delaware Senator Chris Coons' office in Washington DC and Senator Casey's office in Washington DC. They were honored by the State of Delaware and State Senate Resolution Number 11, 2014, for their proactive engagement in looking for alternative energy sources. We were invited to the White House, and unfortunately that didn't happen, because of the closure of the federal government on the 21st, so we did not get a chance to go to the White House. They also presented in the US Department of Energy's bio- energy technology conference. Now, ladies and gentlemen, these are nine students all gathered together five this night, nine of Daniel Boone's students from the neighborhood area school district. It makes me wonder what other potential we have in Daniel Boone that we have not yet tackled into. I got to say, this has probably been the best experience of my professional career as a teacher, getting to work with these nine kids and seeing how impressed everybody can spoken to that have been with these kids. They also wanted me to take a moment on their behalf to thank some people who felt these people, they would not be here. These students recently sent letters of appreciation to several teachers within the school district. These teachers are from math teachers, they're art teachers, science teachers, music teachers, all these teachers they had from the time they came into kindergarten. They include, among others, Lord Bitler, Jared McCulley, I think I'm missing that one out, Mr. Sam McAdmore, Mrs. Teresa Mosleck, Mrs. Rebecca Major, Mr. Ken Durman, Mr. Matt Palmer, Mr. Miz Valerie Thompson, Mrs. Kelly Held, Mr. Matthew Peterman, Mrs. Stacy Hallman, Mr. Monson, now retired, Mrs. Joanna Gerhardt, Mrs. Kelly Boyer, Mr. Brian Rosler, Mr. Jeff Bailey, and Mrs. Susan Hinckley. We didn't get these students to train them, they were trained when we got them, we were just able to put what they had learned to use. So we also want to commend those teachers. We appreciate the community's support. We have over 5,000 likes on the district Facebook account, 3,500-plus visits on the only webpage. So we appreciate that support, that helps us document that we're giving the words out to the Lexus Eco final challenge. Just so you know, the judging on that competition is going to be in mid-February. They'll let us know these kids right now, and initiative $30,000, they won already, they're liable to receive $30,000 if they win. And Megan Jolavet's word, what am I supposed to say?
We already won.
We already won, okay? We already won. Last thing I want to put out there is, March 3rd, 1914, on your calendar, the green team was sponsoring the Second Annual Parent Science Lab right at the high school. We opened it up to all district parents, families, and students, key to 12. So please come out, let their young students, as well as old students, be inspired by what those kids have done, and maybe in the next few years, this will be a yearly thing, not just a once-in-a-lifetime thing. Thank you very much.
Would you like us to increase them, or is that...
Do you want them to...
Okay. Would you introduce your students that you brought with you, please, tonight?
We have Noah Coats. John Dooley. Ian Cook. We could maybe test either, and maybe look at it.
We have nothing but great pride in what you've brought to our school, and want to thank you very much for all the efforts that you have gone forth and gone to the state Capitol, someone representing you took it upon themselves to go before the Delaware, the State of Delaware House of Representatives for commendation. And you brought great pride to us by going to Washington DC, so we thank you very much for all of that. The honors that you bring hopefully will set the bar for the students coming after you, so that when the green team continues for next year, they know that they will have a goal, and they'll have big shoes to fill, so we thank you very much for that. On behalf of the board, we have certificates to recognize your accomplishments, so if you'll come forward, will the board president and I hand you the certificates? Thank you. Megan? Don't that? Yes. Congratulations. John Dooley? Congratulations. Courtney Vittich?
I have answer.
Ian Kurtz? Congratulations. Elizabeth Luddy? Alex Doyle? Non-Hermita? Noah Coats? Thank you so much for bringing them. Teammates received, thank you. I believe we have one other student who participated, Dan Downs, and we have given you his certificate.
He already has it.
He did receive it. Thank you very much.
Can I have a comment on that? The webpage alone is very impressive. They documented all the different phases of the process, and like, Megan, can I have a call, say?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd have a comment as well. It was an honor to see what these students are capable of when they came to Washington DC. They did a phenomenal job, and I know everybody who interacted with them was impressed, not only with their presentation, but with their professionalism. So I'd just like to add my statement of support, the green team, and the wonderful things they're doing for our district and our community.
Thank you, Connor. Mr. Henkel, where are you now?
I am.
Okay. I believe we have one other thing we wanted to cover this evening.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Bailey, who's our advisor to student government, or who does our student government represent. Twice a year, they give an update to the board of the boys' unit at the high school. So, Mr. Bailey, if you would.
I think I have a presentation that we need to put out in the audience, as well. I don't know if we have to do it right away, but I...
Once again, it is a pleasure to be in front of the board. I believe this is the third, fourth, fifth time, I've lost track now after all these years. As Mr. Henkel said, every, twice a year, student government gives a report to this board. At this point in time, I would like to introduce the officers of student government. Cody Mitchell is our president, who will be speaking with you in a second. Along with him is Adam Banks, who is our treasurer, and Noah Under, who is our secretary. So at this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Cody to give his report to the guidance group.
I'm Cody Mitchell, the student government president, and I just wanted to do a simple report of all that hard work and how active that these schools' student body has been in the first half of the school year. A lot of the clubs have been very active during all their different activities that they do and present every year, some being new, some being traditional. DBYEA has four blood drive committees every year, and so far they have listed two. The main ones was in December, they had 400 registered donors and 400 points of blood. Now, the two-hour delay they had, so we're still surprised at how many people still count participated. National Honor Society held their banquet in November, and they deducted 33 new members, putting the total at 15 total members for this school year. And really, the light boosted their second Coon's Got Talent, and they had a total of 13 acts, and they raised $2,800, putting them at a grand total at right now, or at $10,000. In November, we had a musical show, which had three successful shows. And recently, we just had a musical host, the District 10 Chorus, with the director, Dr. Jonathan Reed, Michigan State. And they hosted students all the way north, up in the valley, and we had families in the district hosting families, so they didn't have to travel all the way down the interstate today, so it was nice for the district. This was the first year the high school hosted a first annual Veterans Day, so we had multiple veterans come down, and we had select courses perform for them, as well as we had our student classes provide extra refreshments for after the select course. And then, in the high school, we had certain art students, they painted and displayed certain DVD signs to improve the, improve the school, and we also had multiple art campuses painted locally, and additionally, we have stretched the frames, we can also have them present around the school. And then, once again, the DVD have been showing today, and all the hard work, dedication they have put in. And later in the holidays, we did have the annual holiday go down with approximately 150 students participating, and athletes participating in our current classes. And on the same day, we also had our senior appreciation breakfast with all this hard work that the seniors have been putting in this year. And we have one upcoming event that we would just like to recognize, like the senior class trip to 65 in May, and the senior breakfast at Shining Avenue also in May. And then, Dr. Masu's production, which where all the elementary students come, that will be in February 28th, and April 1st. And the annual Mr. Boone Pageant will also be in May. And Relay Relay will also be in May 17th, the 18th, and prom being May 9th. And this week, student government will be also having a meeting with Sedexo, the annual service meeting. And student government has also been looking into possibly working towards a new electronic marquee, to the condition of a bold marquee, and we're working with Mr. Henkel and Mr. Schmidt with that project, and we would later like to bring that up to the facilities.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for student government? Board comments?
Sounds like you guys are very busy. And May looks like it'll be a fun month.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Absolutely. So, thank you for the report, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you guys have an overhead that you wanted us to see?
No, we will have the email to you guys, so you guys can read that, we will have that to you guys.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other presentations?
Excuse me. I can't hear you.
Would you let people go, that they already presented?
For the, the people that were here, just for the student government report, or for the certificate presentations, if you wish to leave, you know, we'd understand. Moving on, this is also school board recognition month, and I want to comment on that, because there are people in the audience that know, while I sat as a member of the public, I often questioned why a school board would promote recognition of itself. Being on the board now, I find that this is not a school board initiative, that it's something that stems from the Pennsylvania School Board Association, and is really recognition of the time spent by the board members in school board activities with no reimbursement whatsoever. And sitting up here, I find how much time is being spent. Mrs. Bytes and I are new to the board, so we're just learning this, but Mr. Basil, Mrs. Hammel, Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Dowski, who's not here at the moment, they all have put in quite a bit of time, especially those that have served more than one term. So, that being the case, that is the reason for the school board recognition month.
And I think I'll take it from here. Thank you. January is school director recognition month, and on behalf of the administration, faculty, and staff, I would like to take this opportunity to extend our appreciation to the directors serving on the Daniel Boone Area Board of School Directors. We honor our directors for their service and commitment to our children and our community. Thank you for your countless hours of volunteering and for helping our community foster the best learning environment for our students. We value your dedication and contributions to the education and future of our finest resource, our children. Assisting us with recognizing our school directors is the Daniel Boone Parent Teacher Council, who has provided refreshments this evening for the directors. A special thank you to the Parent Teacher Council for the delicious treats. In November of 2013, the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Board Association passed a resolution recognizing January 2014 as school director recognition month. I'd like to just share a bit of this resolution with you. Whereas the local boards have discharged their responsibilities to public education in a manner which has placed public education in the forefront of our educational systems. And whereas locally elected officials have distinguished themselves and their communities in this non-paid volunteer public service commitment. And whereas the contributions of these men and women should be recognized and appreciated by those who benefit from the workings of our public school system. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Board Association hereby proclaims the month of January as school director recognition month in this Commonwealth. Just a couple of facts. Did you know that there are 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, and that all boards have nine members, making up 4,500 school directors across the state of Pennsylvania? Did you know that school director... In November of 2013, the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Board Association passed a resolution recognizing January 2014 as School Director Recognition Month. I'd like to just share a bit of this resolution with you. Whereas the local boards have discharged their responsibilities to public education in a manner which has placed public education in the forefront of our educational systems. And whereas locally-elected officials have distinguished themselves and their communities in this non-paid volunteer public service commitment. And whereas the contributions of these men and women should be recognized and appreciated by those who benefit from the workings of our public school system. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Pennsylvania School Board Association hereby proclaims the month of January as School Director Recognition Month in this Commonwealth. Just a couple of facts. Did you know that there are 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, and that all boards have nine members, making up 4,500 school directors across the state of Pennsylvania? Did you know that school director elections are held every two years on a five-four rotation to ensure continuity? And that unless filling an unexpired term, all board members are elected to four-year terms? Did you know that Daniel Boone School District has two vacancies on the Board of School Directors now, and that we are now accepting applications for school director from two specific regions? That information has been advertised and is on our district website, so if you're interested in applying, I'm putting a plug in so that we have applications to take to the board for selection for these two seats that are, will be vacant very shortly. Although school directors are elected locally, the state constitution delegates to them the responsibility to administer the school system as agents of the General Assembly, and that's something a lot of people don't know, that they are charged with this duty to represent the state constitution as agents of the General Assembly. All directors are volunteers and serve without pay. They say that a typical school director is male, well-educated, married with two or three children, attending public schools, and voluntarily devotes 16 to 20 hours per month to school board business. 16% are retirees, 7% are homemakers, 9% are self-employed or business owners, and 6% are office supervisors. 35% of school directors are female. 57% of all districts involve students at their local board meetings. Of those districts, 95% rate their involvement with students at meetings as satisfactory or highly satisfactory. During the meeting, most boards, or 51%, allow two public comments, as we do here at Daniel Boone. Most, 72%, impose time limits on those comment periods, as we do at Daniel Boone. Pennsylvania school directors continue to keep adequate school funding at the top of the list of the most important educational concerns facing public schools. This evening, I will be presenting to the board a certificate from the Pennsylvania School Board Association, which is composed of those 4,500 school directors from across the state of Pennsylvania, thanking them for their service to our district. Rich Martino, our president. Connor Kurtz, we will make sure you get your certificate.
Thank you.
And we will be presenting our directors, who are unable to attend this evening for multiple reasons, their certificates as soon as we see them. Thank you very much for your service to our district.
Thank you, Dr. Schumpert. Before moving on, I was remiss at the beginning of the meeting, I did not announce, but we will be having an executive session following this meeting to discuss some personnel issues. Item 8, under routine approvals, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the November 25th voting meeting, as well as the December 2nd reorganization meeting and the December 2nd committee of the whole meeting?
Still move?
Second. Okay.
Yeah, just say it.
Just say, move by Andrew Basil, seconded.
Moved by Andrew Basil, seconded by Carol Bice.
Okay, so it'll be unanimous, you need to vote.
Well, we haven't done that yet.
Okay, so.
Mrs. Hamel.
Okay, the motion is for 8A. Motion made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Bice. Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bice?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan? Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathgab? Mrs. Radowski? And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item 8B, do I hear?
I hear a motion to approve 8B and C.
There's a motion to, do I hear, second?
I second.
There's a motion to approve 8B and C by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Mrs. Hamel, you want to?
Are there any questions or comments on 8B and C?
Mrs. Hamel, you want to call the roll, please?
Mrs. Bice?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan? Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathgab? Mrs. Radowski? Mr. Basil?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item 9, presentation by board members, any secretary correspondents? Berks County Intermediate Unit report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Martino. The Berks County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on January 16th, 2014. A new board member was seated, Paul D. Stengel. He is the BCIU board member from Boyer Town area school district. His term expires on June 30th, 2014. There were many routine approvals. One of the most interesting and newsworthy events was the ratification of an agreement with the Reading School District for the BCIU to functionally take over the administration of that school district for the rest of the academic year. Dr. John J. George, who is the executive director of the BCIU, will be taking over as superintendent of record for the Reading area school district. And Dr. Jill M. Hackman will become acting executive director at the BCIU. That was the main event at the board meeting, and you've probably read about it in Berks County. If there are any questions, board members can feel free to contact me.
Are there any questions or comments on Mr. Kurtz's report?
Mr. Kurtz, have they elaborated at all how they're going to be doing two jobs?
They have not. There is a chain of command that has been restructured. While Dr. George is still executive director of the BCIU, all of his powers have been transferred to his assistant director, who is now the acting director. And he is, from what I understand, pretty much acting as the superintendent of the Reading School District. I can get you more information if you'd like to speak with me after the meeting, that would probably be the best option.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Is there a report on the Berks Career and Technology Board?
No, it's clear between Mr. Radowski.
Seeing none, we've already had the student government report. On the legislative report, just briefly, in December, Mr. Kurtz and I were invited to a meeting with the Berks Borough Borough Manager regarding their proposed village concept, where in the Boyers Market and surrounding stores would be constructed. They're having their final vote on that project on February 10th at 6:00 PM in the Berks Borough Borough Hall, after which they anticipate making a presentation to the school board requesting a LERTA, which is a local economic revitalization tax abatement. Earlier this month, Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Rathgab, and I attended an Amity Township Planning Commission meeting, in which they discussed the potential construction of a business park on Limekillin Road. If it's actually developed, they will also be requesting a LERTA. And subsequent to that planning commission meeting, Mr. Basil, Mrs. Bice, and I attended an Amity Township Board of Supervisors meeting, in which they discussed their proposed village concept, designed to promote commercial growth. But at this time, it's simply a zoning change proposal, and there are not any specific plans to build anything. The Senate Finance Committee is working on amendments to Senate Bill 76, and could soon vote the bill out of committee for discussion and a vote on passage. And the last item is that Governor Corbett will unveil his proposed 2014-15 state budget on February 4th, but the final version's not required until June 30th, so whatever he proposes will have to be passed by both the House and the Senate. So we will have no idea on his budget, the final numbers, until June or later. Are there any questions on the legislative report? Seeing none, we'll move on. There's no Buildings and Grounds report, so we'll move on to financial approvals.
I just wanted to actually mention, there is a Finance Committee meeting this Wednesday night, 7 o'clock, in the Matthew Brook Building, if anybody wants to attend.
Mr. Martino, there's an area on the agenda for other reports. I'd just like to report that the Policy Review Committee met tonight, prior to this meeting, and we discussed a few policies, including looking at our class size policy, our policy development policy, and... One item...
Excuse me, Mr. Kurtz, you broke up, but the other policy, it was class size, sports boosters, and policy development. Is that the three you were going to mention?
Yes, that is the case. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. Yeah, that... Policy Review Committee is investigating, and of course, the board would have to approve this if we were to go this route, but instead of just reviewing policy, also investigating perhaps new policies and revisions to, not just revisions policies, but new policies, and just panning out policy ideas. So not just reviewing, but becoming more of an active policy committee. That's something we'll need to discuss, and we're not acting on it this time, but it was floated as an idea. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Kurtz? Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Moving on to financial approvals.
I have a motion for 11A through E.
Is there?
I'll second.
There's a motion to approve 11A through E by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel.
No questions.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Hamel, you want to call the roll?
Motion A, uh, motion 11A through E, motion made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mrs. Rathgab? Mrs. Radowski? Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bice?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next item is motion 11F to approve the adoption of the Act 1 Resolution to Opt In.
Still move?
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion to approve the adoption of Act 1 was made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Are there any comments? Questions?
I'll just make a comment. In the past, as board, we've, the last couple of years, we've voted to opt in, so that we, if the board needed to, the option was available during budget discussions to increase taxes above the Act 1 index to include special exceptions. The board has never opted to do that at the end of the day, but we wanted to make sure we had all opportunities available for us, should we need them. And, you know, that's just a little bit of history on, for those that aren't familiar, but I think it's a good idea, to leave all options on the table, and that's the reason why I'm putting forward a motion to approve that adoption.
Just so everyone understands, opting in means that we have the ability to raise taxes to the index, plus the one exception for pensions.
Two special exceptions.
Well, the one we don't qualify for this year.
Yes, special education?
No, we don't qualify for.
That's out?
That's out, just the one for pensions.
Just the feeses?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, you know, as far as the terminology goes, the opt-in means that you're opting into the Act 1 preliminary budget process, which requires you to advertise and make available for public inspection a preliminary budget, which has to be approved by the board no later than February 19th pursuant to this resolution. That approval is anticipated to occur at the committee of the whole meeting, which is February 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Supers. And the opting out, would, the next motion, would limit us to just the Act 1 index moving forward? I understand what Mr. Basil said about leaving all options open. Personally, I feel like having that option, I think there are savings to be made, and I think there are items in the budget that, where we can tighten our belts, and I don't think having too many options, I think that would preclude us from taking all the steps necessary, but that's just my thought. Are there any other comments or questions?
I just have a question. Opting in, does that put a burden on us to maybe, to maybe some sort of reporting requirement?
Well, what you have to do, if you opt in, then you're required to approve a preliminary budget, and that has been prepared by the district administration. You would have to make that available for public inspection 20 days before the board actually approves the preliminary budget. You would also have to advertise that preliminary budget at least 10 days prior to the approval. And again, it's all anticipated for approval on February 10th. Opting out means that you opt out of the preliminary budget process, and again, it's very important to note that we're only talking about the preliminary budget. Our preliminary budget can be changed at any time between its adoption and the adoption of the final budget, which isn't due until June 30th of this year.
And we've done that, you know, every year for the last couple of years. You know, it's basically the budget that we've already presented to the public, as is, and I think it's coming on us to let them know that it's a preliminary budget, that if there's nothing, you know, set in stone there, and that, you know, we can continue to work and try to improve that budget, which we've always done, between now and the end of June. I think the reason why this is just a critical issue is if you vote to opt out, we're essentially limiting ourselves in terms of the overall tax increase that may be available to us. And, you know, I'm not in favor of a tax increase of any kind, but I certainly want to make sure I have all options available to me as a board member, in case we need to do what...
Could you refresh my memory on what the dollar value of that is?
Mr. Boyer, could you break down the two different dollar values? I have it here. Hold on.
Just the Act 1, 2.8, the index is 782,000. The feesers would be additional 326,000.
So it's going from .7 mils to 1 mil.
And if I remember correctly, Mr. Seldon Ridge, Kim had suggested that we opt in, according to his findings?
Thank you.
As his five-year plan.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Hamel.
Motion is for 11F. Motion made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Mr. Kurtz?
No.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bice?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. And Mr. Martino?
No.
Since we've already opted in, we don't need to vote on opting out, correct?
I have a right.
Motion to accept the 2012-13 local audit.
I'm making a motion that we table that. We haven't had an opportunity... We haven't had an opportunity to speak to the auditor, and it doesn't look like I'm going to have that opportunity on Wednesday night to do that. It might not be scheduled. I'm happy to call her directly, which I believe Mr. Boyer just provided me with her contact information today, but I haven't had a chance to talk to her. And, you know, I think that question needs to be resolved.
I agree.
Are you seconding?
There's a motion.
There's a motion to table, which we require a second.
I second.
There's no discussion on that, there's just a vote on the motion to table.
Motion by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Bytes. Mrs. Hamel?
Okay. Okay, motion to table 11H. Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Personnel approvals.
There's a motion for 12A1A.
There's a motion for 12A1A, is there a second?
Second motion.
Motion made by Mr. Basil for A1A, seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Any questions or comments?
I just, Mr. Haas, I just wanted to thank you for your work as a school district for the last few years. I think you've been a real asset to the district and to this board. You've done a great deal of work to improve our infrastructure, our network security, draw a real, high-level professionalism, I think, to our IT office. And I wish you well in your endeavors, and sorry to see you leave. But thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Hamel?
Motion is for 12A1A, motion made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next item is the following, professional resignation of Angela...
I'll make a motion for 12B.
Or 12...
No, that was, that was part of... The prior motion was for...
No, just A1A he did.
Oh, A1A, so we got A1.
Yeah, so I'm making a motion for 12B.
No, it's A1B.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I read.
Yeah, you only, you only did the first one.
A12.
A12 and 12B.
12.
12A2 and 12B is my motion.
Okay, so the motion is for 12A2 and all of 12B?
Correct. As amended.
As amended. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yeah, yeah.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, um, I thought we were looking into the necessity of the indoor percussion instruction.
I'm sorry, I...
If I could speak to that. He just withdrew his name today. We are not, so there'll only be two individuals doing the percussion instruction. Uh, I was told this is very similar to having multiple coaches in a sports team. And don't ask me about sports too much, but an offensive coach, a defensive coach, et cetera. And this is, um, excuse me, percussion, um, I don't know if our music teachers here at all, but I know that with the percussion instruction, they break these 20 students down into different disciplines that they have to instruct in. Now there'll be two instructors for 20 students, which, this is a pre-approved budget item that was included in last year's budget, so this money has been budgeted for this school year for these instructors.
And what is the term, please, for the...
Just this year. This is an extra...
How long, what is the term, or have they already begun, and when do they end? Is it January 1st, January 2nd?
Mr. Henkel, Henkel.
It's a winter activity.
It's a winter activity.
It did already start, right?
Thank you.
And these, these instructors?
They're already working, they've started off.
So they're already helping out?
Mrs. Bytes, we have in the past requested that approvals of positions, coaching positions and stipends and things like that, to get the board before the activity actually starts to commence it, so that we have an opportunity as a board to, you know, address those things.
I'm a little perplexed about that.
Yeah.
Does Mr. Anderson help us also at this point?
It's been informed, hasn't been anything to provide.
Well, let me ask you. If I understand correctly, you're saying the board has asked that these be brought to the board ahead of time? And if I'm reading these correctly, I, I, or if I heard Mr. Henkel correctly, these people are already working for us?
Problem with these were percussion, as people have resold it.
Could you come to the, the mic, please?
Problem occurs around these activities, whether it's coaching or band, because people have been approved, and then they're exiling, and they have to get the program going to do competitions. Uh, I know one person resigned like the other day, but they're not in place.
Mr. Henkel, what I've seen, though, both as a member of the public and my short time on the board, is these seem to be recurring, and the one that resigned the other day would be an emergency situation. What about the others?
I don't know. I'm not aware of that.
So have we already approved other indoor instructors, indoor percussion instructors? Were, were other instructors approved prior to the program in December? Is this two to one? Or is this two to?
Used to fill the positions that had been opened.
So there were positions approved?
That's part of the, they were already made.
And now they're vacant, vacated? So wouldn't the money be already allocated?
Money's out there, these are contracts approved, these are approved contracts, meaning some of them are contracts. Essentially, these people, not the contracts.
These stipend amounts are approved as per our con, our collective bargaining agreement. And as part of the overall budget, you know, if we're offering into a percussion, then, you know, there's a certain budgeted amount that we approved as a school board last June for those slots. Now, in terms of the actual people filling the posts, as a board, we approve those things as the year goes around and people step up for those positions. Uh, what we've asked in the past as a school board is, you know, can we get these names prior to the activity actually beginning? Because if we don't approve somebody, and they've already started coaching or whatever they're doing, there's a problem. And secondly, they shouldn't be getting compensated for work that they haven't been approved to do yet. So therein lies the rub, and, um, you know, something that continues to come on one time for time.
So Dr. Shankar, I think what we're trying to convey is this has been an issue, the board in the past has already said, we want these names ahead of time. Barring an emergency, we want the names ahead of time.
That makes sense to me, and I would encourage the administration to do that. And in an ideal world, we can do it. With the holidays and weather and so forth, I don't know the reason, don't know the reason why this is delayed in coming before the board, except in some of these very special positions, it's tough to get an instructor. So maybe they came forward at the last minute. I don't know all of the circumstances, but in the future, I can tell you that I, since I know that it's now an issue, I will try and get it to the board as quickly as possible.
Mr. Martino, I'd like to just jump in, and this exact same situation happened last year, if I'm not mistaken, with the exact same program. We can't have people working for us prior to us hiring them. That is inappropriate in my mind. We discussed this before, I don't know why it's an issue again, because the previous board made it very clear that that was entirely inappropriate. I just needed, I think we have to address this, and I don't know if we could do anything now, but...
I'm not sure, we should be approving positions if they have...
Well, Mr. Kurtz, to answer your comment, it was just addressed to Dr. Shankar, I believe, for the first time. I, I think she agrees with everything we've all said, so going forward, I, I think you'll see a change. I can't answer for what's happened in the past.
I just, you know, we do have, you know, a committee of the whole meeting where if, you know, A, we did address this in December, B, we addressed it at a committee of the whole meeting as well, doesn't have to wait until, if there's an emergency situation that they approve, we can address it. We meet every two weeks, and I think we have an opportunity to address it. I, I made a motion to approve it, just because these guys are already there, they're already working, to not approve it. I don't, as far as Jamie Mills and Matt Phillips are concerned, I don't have any reason not to approve them as percussion coaches. Hence my reason for moving forward with it. I didn't see anything out of line in terms of the stipends that they're being paid. However, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if Mr. Supers knew, recall this, we have to go back and take a look at this, I wasn't sure whether we prorated the stipends based on when the board actually approved the minutes of these.
I don't recall that.
We did.
Yeah, I, I think we ought to take a look at the minutes to verify that. Because it was a big ruh-rah about this.
From last year.
From last year, right.
Well, assuming we approved them, though, these, these stipends are effective tomorrow. So there'd be no, no reason to prorate them.
But the stipend is for the entire, if they start in January 1st, the stipend would include work from January 1st to January 28th, for example, whereas I believe as a board we had discussed prorating the stipends as of the date it become effective. So you would take that $1,262 divided by 12 over days, and it started January 28th. So it wouldn't be a full stipend.
I would just note, looking at the committee of the whole, these names were on your agenda, although not for action on the January 13th committee of the whole.
Right, we asked Dr. Shankar to look into the necessity of all three positions.
I did. I asked that question.
And you're comfortable with two, for 20 students?
I am, and I, and only because I'm going to go with the recommendation of the high school principal who spoke with the music director. I know very little about percussion, although I should, but if they tell me that it is very specific and they need it to compete, then I have to take their word for it, and on a $50 million budget, we're spending an awful lot of time on less than $2,500. So I ask that you approve it, please.
I figured their issue here is...
The timing.
Well, no, yeah, time, it's a big deal, you know, because it's not just these two positions, it could be 27 positions that were often thrown at us as a board to approve at, at one time, and that's substantial enough money. And I don't want to do anything that's going to contradict, uh, previous board policy that was created, so, and it was done for a reason. And that was specifically so that people were incentivized to bring things to us in a timely fashion.
And I'm going to try and move that?
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm, I'm not blaming you for the current situation, I'm just saying that unless there's a penalty for, you know, not following the procedure, the procedure, you know, the behavior continues. Unbated, year in, year out, year in, year out, and what's the point of even voting on these things if they're already doing the jobs?
But, but that's why it's a big deal. It's not the, it's not the amount of money, it's the fact that it has come up previously.
Multiple times, I believe, too. So I know Dr. Shankar is new, but we have a high school principal, we have assistant superintendent, we have other people in management who are aware of this issue, so why is it continuing to happen? And what will the penalty be?
Well, I mean, I would suggest that you amend the motion to approve the appointments with a possible proration of sal, of the stipend based on the action taken by the board last year under similar circumstances.
Someone else make that motion, not accept amendment to the motion.
So you, okay, then, Ms. Hamel, do you accept that amendment to the, to the motion?
Can you repeat it so I can write it down?
Yes, I would say that the, uh, the motion would be to approve the appointments as presented with a possible proration of the stipends consistent with the board action taken last year under similar circumstances.
Okay. Okay. And that goes along with the, the first motion, that's just as amended?
Correct.
And presented by the solicitor. Okay. So motion for 12A2, 12B, and B.
And B, as amended.
As amended.
And presented by the solicitor.
And presented by the solicitor. First by Mr. Basil and seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Mrs. Hamel, yes? Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Can I make a comment on that particular section? And going forward, when we get extracurricular approvals, can we get it in a chart form so we can see who is already out there in all the different activities that are running? Say the, the winter band, we'll see how they fit in to, like, indoor percussion, and then who it is and what their dates are, what the season is, and so we know at any one time who we have. What is the scope of our extracurricular program? Is that realistic? To see that way?
Absolutely, yeah, that information's readily available, I just, absolutely.
Yeah, and Dr. Shankar, I think, I think some kind of chart like that would be beneficial to all the, the new board members especially, and we have two more coming on, so...
Thank you.
I've been asked to move up item 13C. Is there, if there's no objection, can we do that?
No objections.
So is there a motion to accept the following donations from the Blazer Foundation?
They have a presentation to make.
It's moved by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel, and I understand that there's a presentation to be made?
We want to vote first, or...
No, we're not.
Denise Turner with the Department of Education, and Nancy Datski, and the rest of the U.S. P's, Dan Comber. The goal of the mission of the Legion is to honor veterans, those veterans who have a need, and give honor profits to veterans and the community. Last year, we chose a band, the Strayards Backpacks, the softball team, and this year, a choice that we executive the board, those ones were mostly basketball.
This is another presentation of donation.
Okay. And the second one is volleyball. And the third is basketball.
No, this is totally separate.
Thank you. Appreciate your help.
I had no idea. She did? Okay. Why didn't we put her on? Yeah, and she was missed.
Thank you, and I misstated that, it was not from the Blazer Foundation, it was from the Birdsboro Legion. There was some confusion on the agenda, I apologize.
Do we have these people here? Are they talking? All right.
Moving on to item 13 programs.
We need to finish.
We have a motion on the table.
Oh, 13C is on the table for the donations from the Blazer Foundation, I'm sorry. Questions or comments?
I'd just like to say thank you. This is great, great for our students.
I would also like to commend the Blazer Foundation as well. In a very short time, it's obvious that they're up and running and starting to contribute to the school district in a positive way, and I want to thank Ms. Conlon for her efforts and everyone else who has donated to the foundation.
Other comments or questions? Mrs. Hamel?
Motion on the table is 13C. A motion made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes? Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We have item 13A.
There's a motion for 13A and B.
Second?
There's a motion by Mr. Basil to approve items 13A and B and seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Any comments or questions?
Just in the interest of transparency, I just want to point out that the 375 for the培训班 training, I think that is a problem, I appreciate the opportunity to go and do anything related to bringing some of the position.
The other two.
I just want to put this down.
Shall we say?
The opportunity to go for that training, I hope it's well spent, I hope the district will find it well spent and less than mine.
I think it's a great thing, and I think that every board member should participate in it, there's a lot to learn in a short period of time, and it's invaluable, it's an invaluable experience.
Assuming we have the two new members by the end of February, could we approve this up to six?
Maybe have a second motion or a second, you know, vote to bring them into the fold as well.
Increase that up to six. Increase the number to six.
Well, they may, I think we just, well, that's right, we won't have the...
Motion to approve a maximum of six.
I would suggest amending it to a maximum of six.
Ms. Hamel, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Motion's been amended.
Motion's amended by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Hamel. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Hamel?
Sorry.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes? Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
There's no policy report, and there's no transportation report. Old business. Item 16A, is there a motion to approve limiting executive sessions to no more than one hour unless extended by majority vote?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Kurtz, is there a second?
Second.
Still moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mrs. Bites. Comments or questions?
I just, I just don't think it's a good idea. I think there's a lot to get discussed in a short period of time, and we don't lead off as a board in limiting those discussions to an hour, and then having to vote every hour, or whatever the process might be, to move it forward. I think if there's a certain group of people who don't want an issue to be discussed, whatever it may be, and the board we will disagree on things, then it's a great tool to shut down discussion. It can be used for, I think, you know, ill-suited purposes. And so I, I'm just hesitant against it. I think in the past, when we've had an executive session, and people couldn't stay the whole time, they, you know, they let it be known, we try to work very hard to accommodate their schedules and get those specific issues that we need to address prior to their departure, and if they have to leave, we've always made an effort to include them.
I'm unable to hear, okay, I'm back, I couldn't hear anything.
I, too, have found that the executive sessions, being the nature of what we're going to be talking about, isn't always a quick solution, and hopefully you get finished in an hour. I mean, our goal is to beat up all night, but I think when we just say, you know, no more than an hour unless you sit there and vote on it, you might be in the middle of discussion, and then they say, well, it's over, now we're all going home, and not come to a conclusion.
Is there a time limit that either of you would be comfortable with restricting it to, where you could say, well, after this point, it's not really quality conversation anyway?
I think that's the job of the board president, to kind of keep control of the executive sessions and run those meetings, and, you know, I could say in the past, there'd be some that have been there for hours, you know, three or four hours sometimes, after a late meeting here. And that's, it's a drag, right? But if the other times, you know, people have said, look, I gotta be out of here by this time, and we've discussed two or three things, and then we're gone, and we'll make arrangements to have a phone call or something else later on. I think the challenge that we've found is everybody's so busy, you can see it tonight, there's only very few of us here, that sometimes coordinating those phone calls or having us at a follow-up meeting is difficult to get accomplished. And if you've got everybody there, all of them committed to be here, sometimes it's easy to knock it out. But, look, anybody at any time could stand up, or five people can stand up and say, look, we're done talking about this, we're going home, we're going to bed, and the conversation's over. I mean, you know, you don't have the majority of the board there anymore to try to move an issue to closure, so.
Let me make three comments, since this was my idea. First of all, it says it can be extended by majority vote, so we're not limited to one hour. Secondly, the purpose of it was, was to make people be more concise in their presentation rather than sitting there for three or four hours. And the third thing is, in regard to what you said, Mr. Basil, so the board members would expect that if the board president says, excuse me, you're going on and on and on, you need to cut it down. Everybody will understand that?
I think it's the job of the board president to try to rein board members in and keep them on topic, absolutely. And if someone's running on, you gotta let them know, hey, look, you know, we got your point, you know, and then next, next, next. You've got nine people in there talking about an issue, it doesn't take very long to gobble up some time. If, that's only if you're talking about one issue, or you're just talking about three or four different issues, or five. I, I don't know, I just, I, I can appreciate the idea behind it, don't get me wrong, nobody wants to be here forever, and we all have families, and, you know, we need to go to work next morning, all that kind of stuff. But at the same time, I just, I just feel like setting an arbitrary time to finish our business, particularly when it comes to executive session items, is, I, in the past, I've seen it, I've seen that type of thing used improperly.
Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Hamel?
The motion is 16A, motion made by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mrs. Bites. Mrs. Bites? I want to make sure I understand this, so we're, I'm sorry, back up a little bit here. So what we're voting yes or no is a motion to approve that the executive session to more, no more than one hour unless extended by majority vote?
Correct.
No. No. Mrs. Hamel, so it's no. Mr. Kurtz?
No.
Mr. Basil?
No.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
No, motion fails.
I'm sorry, repeated, motion failed.
I would like to move item 16B amended to read, a motion to approve utilizing a voice vote rather than a roll call vote on routine agenda resolutions with a recorded roll call vote to be taken at the request of a school director. Would you like me to read that motion again?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve utilizing a voice vote rather than a roll call vote on routine agenda resolutions with a recorded roll call vote to be taken at the request of a school director.
Making that motion, Connor?
Yes.
Is there a second? I'll second. Motion made by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Basil. Any comments, questions?
Yes, the reason I moved this amended resolution is because I do believe this could speed up the process. That being said, if any one director wants to vote for a person on the record, I believe it should be, and that will increase transparency, but it will also allow the board to hopefully expedite procedures, and then maybe we could have longer executive sessions or discussions or whatever, because we won't be spending all our time voting, and we can spend our time discussing. But I'd like to make it clear that if one board member would like it recorded, then it needs to be recorded as a roll call vote. Otherwise, it could be a voice vote on items that it's appropriate for.
The only, and I appreciate you making that amendment, Mr. Kurtz, I think the only question I have is, how are we defining routine, and is that going to be indicated on the agenda so we know which ones are routine items and which ones are non-routine items? Like, for example, the Act One Resolution, is that routine, because we got to vote on it every year? Or is that something that is a non-routine item?
My view on that, and I guess I could let Dr. Shanker and the board president speak as the ones who write the agenda, is that your routine items would be your personnel approvals, it would be, it would be up to the board, really, the items we vote on every month, not every year, but every month. And the items that pass, there isn't objection on. If anybody wants to vote no and wants their vote recorded, then they have a right to request that. But instead of saying, doing a roll call for every single item, where most of them are nine, zero, if we could just say yea or nay as a group, I think we could really move things along.
There are items on here right now that are headed routine approvals. Item eight was the heading routine approvals, and I think others of these could have been listed under routine approvals also. Now, the two resolutions obviously aren't routine, and I think they require a roll call vote.
I don't think, there is no definition, I mean, certainly, specific resolutions would be, you know, that are brought to the district on an absentee basis or on an emergent basis would not be routine. Certain votes that are required to be recorded, like approval of an intermediate unit budget, vocational technical school budget, appointments to those boards, trying to think of, approval of your own budget, I mean, they're certainly not routine, but I mean, personnel approvals can be considered routine.
And I just wanted to, I guess my comment would be, I'm all for the idea of speeding things up, I guess my only comment would be, I think we ought to have it somewhere indicated on here with, you know, routine in parentheses or something like that, so that we're all aware, okay, this is going to be a routine one, it's going to make the job of the president easier, the secretary, in terms of conducting those things, and we're all aware of, okay, this is just a yea, nay, and this one's a, you know, a roll call.
Well, just to make it easier, since the concept would be that there would be mass roll call votes, you note the ones that are roll call and the, and the ones that aren't indicated by, for a roll call vote are routine unless requested otherwise.
I like that.
And then at the start, when we do agenda edits, if we don't want something to be removed from that section?
True.
Yeah, at the BCIU, we do this, and if any director at the beginning during agenda edit says, I'd like to take that item separately, then it's taken separately. I think that would be a good solution as well.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Hamel?
Motion is 16B, as amended by Mr. Kurtz. Oh, no. Okay. Motion first by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Basil. Mrs. Hamel, yes? Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item 16C, a motion to approve adding a member of the high school student government as a non-voting student representative to the board of directors, beginning with the September 2014 voting meeting.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Kurtz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hamel. Comments or questions?
I think this is a great addition to our board, so many other districts do it, and it will be a great opportunity for the board to hear more from students, and a great opportunity for students to interact with the board. I think this is a great idea all around.
One thing that we'll need to do if this is enacted is we'll need to bring a policy before the board, so that procedurally, there, everything is spelled out, and so that's why this is scheduled to start in September, so that the policy committee would have an opportunity to develop a policy that will support this motion.
I would, my personal take on this, I'd like to see the policy before we put this into place, because I just have so many questions. I mean, does this mean that they're up here every night with us, or is it what, as we discussed at the committee of the whole, they're, you know, in the audience, they report to us on what they're doing on a monthly basis? I would love to hear that. And then, you know, they can stay for the rest of the meeting and participate as they see fit, but if they need to go home and study for something or get ready for a game, they can get up and walk out. I mean, I'd hate to have somebody sitting up here for three and a half hours during a board meeting or something like that, because they're a representative of the board, and they're going to sit up here at the table with us. I guess I'd like to have this fleshed out a little bit before we vote on it, but we got the time, we've got, you know, seven months.
So you'd like to see the policy developed first? Dr. Shanker, would you go on that?
I can certainly bring a policy to the committee, and we can work on specifics there and bring it to the full board.
I'm sure it's not as, you know, the very old, the real, should involve some school districts that do this, policies and this.
No, it's early on, when I was mentioning about, did you know about the board, there are 56 school, 56 school, 56% of the school districts in Pennsylvania have a student representative on the board. And what, where better to learn about the role of the board in parliamentary procedure and et cetera would be right here. And, yes, they would have a seat at the board table. If they have a conflict with another activity, they don't come that evening. Obviously, if they're non-voting, and the material that they get would be the material that goes to the public. So, but, yes, they're here three hours, but that's the commitment. If they want to do it, they know that it could be a three-hour meeting.
Where I first saw this was several years ago at OJ Roberts. They had the student council president as a member of their board, and the student council president sat with the board, made a presentation, was listed on the agenda to make a student council presentation, but sat there the whole meeting. Mr. Kurtz, there were suggestions to table this until the policy was drawn up. It's your motion.
All right, I would like to comment before I make any further motion. I think this is going to be great, and I would be fine working with the committee, the policy committee, to work on the proposal. I assisted the Pottstown School District with the creation of their student member proposal, and I've heard that's working very well. So on that note, we can develop the policy first, we do have time, so I will withdraw my motion, and I would ask the administration to bring a policy before the policy committee. my motion, and I would ask the administration to bring a policy before the policy committee, and we'll develop it.
I think, at this point, the proper procedure would just entertain a motion to table by someone who did not make the original motion.
I'll make a motion to table. Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Basil to table the item sixteen C, seconded by Mrs. Bites.
Do you have a vote on that, Mrs. Basil?
I do have. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes, and Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item sixteen D is a motion to-
As a member of the policy committee, and ask that the board members send suggestions for what their vision of that is, and try to incorporate everybody's, and be able to come back to policy.
I think that's a great idea. I don't really know if I have a vision for this, so.
You just have one little piece.
Yeah, absolutely.
And maybe, I should give that permission.
Good suggestion.
Item sixteen D, a motion to approve the appointment of three directors to serve as liaisons to the township and borough meetings for the following regions, Union Township, Amity Township, and the Borough of Birdsborough.
Do you want to wait on this until we have all the board members present and two new board members appointed, or do you want to have this?
Hi. With such a sparse attendance tonight, I think it would be best to wait.
Then I move we table item B until the next voting meeting.
Is there a second?
If we, excuse me, if you wait till the next vote, next voting meeting, Connor?
Yes.
That's cool, you can work, yeah, that'll work, okay.
I second the motion.
Comment, uh, any comments, questions? Vote, Mrs. Hamel?
Motion for sixteen B is to be tabled until the next voting meeting. Motion made by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mrs. Bites. Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under new business, item seventeen A, a motion to approve the agreement between the Daniel Boone Area School District and Ray Associates to conduct a superintendent search at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Still moved.
Wait.
Is there a second, then you can have discussion.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Basil. Comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Subers, do you have any comments?
Well, yeah, I would just say that this really is a proposal as presented. If you, if you read the proposal and says that they, they will present a, uh, the district with its, a contract form, I would recommend that the motion be, uh, be amended to read that the final agreement to be approved by the district administration with assistance and review by the district solicitor.
Yeah.
And I would note, just, I mean, as far as the terms, it's not to exceed, they do indicate in the proposal that it can be terminated at any time, and that you would only owe for services up to the date of termination.
But I think we need to be able to quantify what those services are. You know what I'm saying? And, you know, the contract should spell out what those terms are, what's being done at what time, how much money that might cost.
Well, and that's the other thing that I don't know, is there's, there's a schedule of activities that-
They kind of had a schedule, um, I don't, I forget what page number it's on. It wasn't really an itemized, it was kind of like, these are the things we're going to take care of for you, and, um-
Yeah, actually, it's a blank timeline.
If I could comment there, I spoke today with one of their references at, on the Springford School Board, and they said that they worked with you to create a timeline. So they will fill that in with the district to meet our needs. So the timeline is, and I asked the reference how their timeline worked, and you said that they took about four to five months, but they are willing to go as quickly or as slowly as you want, and you can begin to interview really as soon as you are ready. So I think that might explain the blank timeline.
I guess the question, though, for Connor is, uh, if they could put numbers next to some of the line items in here, because if there isn't, let's say we get into this and we find out we're not satisfied with the level of work that they're going to do, and we want to, you know, switch horses, so to speak, how much do we owe? And who makes that determination? Uh, very easily, they could hand us a bill for fourteen thousand, you know, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and say, okay, well, we did all the work upfront, even though we only entered a contract for, you know, three weeks. Um, I just want to make sure that we, we're going into this eyes open.
I understand. Would it be possible, because I, I don't want to have to wait on this another month, we need to do it right. Don't get me wrong. If we agree that Ray Associates is the best firm to do this, can we authorize the administration to execute the contract? Can we agree, like, is there a way we can do that? So we're not waiting another month before starting the process.
No, I think we could probably say that, you know, we agreed to, to, uh, to entertain the proposal and not to exceed fifteen thousand five hundred dollars upon review of our solicitor approval of the board. I mean, at some point, we're going to have to have an executive session either by phone or at a committee whole meeting or something to ratify the contract.
Well, I, I, you know, I mean, again, there does look, appear to be a lot of loose issues here, you know, when we're, you know, that I would prefer, and I'm sure the district administration would prefer to take back to the board, the, uh, final approval. I would just merely direct the, the district administration to obtain the, the actual contract form, and, and I'll review it in time for the committee of the whole meeting. Um, and if, you know, I mean, we could present the contract in a more finalized, an actual contract in a final form for board consideration at the committee of the whole meeting.
And I would think, hold on one second, Connor, I would think that in the interim, there's nothing stopping us from meeting with this group face-to-face in the district, you know, whether it's all nine board members, uh, seven board members, or it's, you know, a collection thereof, but to have a sit-down with them and, you know, better understand the terms of the contract, what are the things that they can start rolling up and preparing for versus, you know, having to wait for the ink to be on the, on the paper. I mean, there's not, there's no reason why we need to be sitting on our hands for a week or two weeks.
If they're willing to do that.
Yeah, they may, I think they probably would.
I would assume they would be. Um, and I just note that you might want to have a video conference or teleconference, um, just to expedite it from there, because I do suggest that as a cost-saving measure.
So rather than a motion to approve the agreement, shall we, uh, approve the negotiation?
I would just, I would just give the, the, the administration's received a directive. I don't think any formal board action is required at this time.
So do I need to re-withdraw my motion?
Table.
Yeah, I guess. Sorry, Connor, we're going to have to table.
It's fine.
Trying to jump ahead of time to have this discussion.
Well, let me, let me just ask a question, because I, I agree, a, the face-to-face meeting would be good, so, Dr. Sankar, could you arrange that, to have that at the, at district, uh-
Absolutely.
If you can't do it face-to-face, I mean, GoToMeeting or Skype or any of these other forums are available to get all of us together as many people as we want to participate at a specific time, you know, and we've done this a lot in the past with other contracts, where it's the board president, or it's three or four of the people, they get together and, and sit down, and if not everybody can be there, those folks can at least report out to the other board members and board president, hey, look, these are the things that we addressed, you know, um, if there's specific questions board members have about the proposal ahead of time, get them in writing to the board president or whoever's going to be meeting with, uh, these, these folks, and those specific questions can be asked and answered, and, um, you know, we can report that back to those that were not-
Can I go now?
Can everybody hear me?
No.
Okay. So I was just saying, it's probably important that, uh, in the past, what we've done as a board, is the board president and a couple of the board members have sat down with different parties that we're negotiating with in order to flesh out a contract, and board members that cannot be a president will typically submit questions in advance on the proposal that can be asked and answered at those meetings and reported back to them at a later time, uh, so we can expedite this process. And there are other forums available, be it Skype or GoToMeeting or something else, where everybody can participate in the process, but there's no reason for us to sit on our hands for a week or two weeks while we get their contract and our solicitor has an opportunity to review, review the terms, and, uh, and, and there could be a couple of iterations of that contract back and forth, quite frankly, before it's ready to be signed.
I agree, so what we're asking Dr. Sankar to do is, is A, ask them to actually submit a, a contract, and-
Correct.
And, and B, Dr. Sankar, if you could set up a meeting with them, either via some kind of telecommunications or in person, my understanding about Ray Associates is they have regional representatives, so-
Yeah, we could probably set something up this week.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, because I agree, we don't want to wait much longer, this has been, uh, agreed by everyone that it's a priority, so.
I'll take the lead on this, um, and make the initial contact, uh, and then report back to the board.
Great.
Now, there is still a motion on the table, so I think we need to table it for the sake of parliamentary procedure.
Yeah, I make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Bites.
Is seventeen A is being tabled?
Well, we need a vote on that.
Okay, it was seventeen A is being tabled, um, motion by Mr. Basil, seconded by-
Mrs. Bites.
Mrs. Bites, okay. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I have a question about the process. When we do these motions, can we, um, motion to table and throw in a request for a roll call vote? I think that's not a routine, now, we, we agreed to roll call vote for routine votes, but when we make a motion on some of these, can we make a motion? Is that legal? Uh, a motion to table, and, and a motion to include roll call vote?
Mrs. Bites, I think you may be mistaking roll call and voice vote. We, the change we made earlier was to utilize a voice vote for routine items, not a roll call. I believe what you might be asking is if we could make a motion to table by utilizing a voice vote. Is that correct?
Yes, I am, yes. Is that-
Okay, Mr. Uh, Mr. Subers might be able to weigh in, not better than any of us.
I think, starting next meeting, that's what we'll do, uh, just to take the action to approve that. So I say, going forward-
No, we made the, the, we're going to do voice votes for a routine-
Well, I think a motion to tables are, I would consider a routine, a routine, uh-
I mean, if there, there, if there was an issue, it says unless requested by a board member, so if there was an issue that you specifically wanted a voice vote on, you could call for it, but if it's just a motion to the table, and, and-
So we just feel that you should-
And, and the ayes, if, if, yeah, for the ayes, and, and there's no nays, then, then it's not an issue. So that was tabled, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Item seventeen B, a motion to approve the settlement of claims raised by parents of a child with disabilities, providing reimbursement of educational expenses up to fifteen thousand dollars in exchange for a waiver of all potential claims against the district.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Bites. Comments or questions?
This was handled by the solicitor, uh, for the district who handles, uh, special education, um, all our special education claims, and, uh, this is a negotiated settlement, and I did speak with the, uh, Mr. Warner, and, uh, he has provided an explanation to you, which I gave to you in my memo.
I have a question. I, I don't have attachment six.
Oh, okay. Here it is. Sorry.
Any other questions or comments?
Oh, okay, she said it was on the computer.
No other questions or comments, Mrs. Hamel?
Motion for seventeen B, motion made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Bites. Uh, Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Bites?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Seventeen C, a motion to designate the Red Eagle as the Daniel Boone Area School District newspaper of general circulation.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Hamel?
Motion for seventeen C, made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Bites?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We have a motion to accept the resignation of Mrs. Hamel as a school board director effective close of business today. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, any questions?
Motion by Mrs. Bites, is there a second?
With regrets.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Basil. Comments or questions?
I just want to thank Mrs. Hamel for her service over the last few years. It's been, um, it's been invaluable. Uh, she's rolled up her sleeves and jumped in and, uh, really waded into a very difficult, uh, budgetary climate, and I think, uh, and brought some great ideas to the table, and the board has adopted, and the solicitor board is better for some challenges, and, uh, your efforts have been sorely missed, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and, um, I wish you well outside the board, and, um, just want to let you know this, because it's, it was great working with you on the board, and, uh, you will be a nice guy.
Thank you.
I'd like to just echo Mr. Basil's comments. Mrs. Hamel and I came on as freshman board members in December two thousand eleven, and I often find, found her expertise to be very helpful, as well as her counsel, uh, regarding some, some issues with the, the board. It almost seems like there's a little bond between board members who come into the board together, and I really would like to thank Mrs. Hamel for her service and her help over the past few years.
Thank you for your help in orienting me to the position of, of Mrs. Hamel.
Thank you, thank you very much. Not easy to leave, but thank you.
We need a vote?
Vote for seventeen B with regrets. Um, motion made by Mrs. Bites, seconded by Mr. Basil. Mr. Basil?
No.
No? Mrs. Bites, pass. Mrs. Hamel, yes. Uh, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Can I ask, have we gotten three no votes? Would she have to stay?
I don't know. It's never happened, I hope.
If you pass with regrets, then we're still accepting whether or not you have to-
Turn around.
Item seventeen E, the resignation of Mr. McGlocklin.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Bites.
Roll call, um, seventeen E, motion made by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mrs. Bites. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
There's, item seventeen F is, is a motion to appoint someone as the B C T C alternate representative, with everyone missing tonight and two board members not yet appointed. I don't have a name to suggest for item F or G.
Yeah, I would say we just pass on those until we get some people here.
I move we table items F and G.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kurtz to table items F and G, seventeen F and G, and seconded by Mr. Basil. Comments or questions? Mrs. Hamel?
Okay, motion for seventeen F and G to be tabled, motion made by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Basil. Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item seventeen H, uh, a motion to approve the revised school board committees as presented by the school- by the school board president, so let me give you what the school board president has revised. Mrs. Tordowski has agreed to chair the facilities committee. Mr. Basil has agreed to chair the transportation committee. We require replacements for Ms. Hamel and/or Mr. McGlocklin on the facilities committee, and I say and/or because we have two members, so we need at least one more, but no more than two. We require replacements for Ms. Hamel and/or Mr. McGlocklin on the transportation committee. Unless we have any volunteers, I intended to wait until our new board members are selected to nominate anybody for these vacancies, unless there's an objection where somebody wants to volunteer.
I was just gonna point out to the rest of the board members, as a sole member of the transportation committee at this point, I don't want to wait a month to get started on having discussions with our transportation partners, and so I would have suggested that Mr. Martino, as board president, you know, act as a de facto board member, or committee member, to allow, we need at least two committee members to have a meeting, and that would enable us to at least begin those discussions with our transportation providers. If there's no objections to that, I just want to make sure that was transparent to the rest of the board.
And I've agreed to do that. I think there is another transportation committee member, though.
I think it's just me.
I don't, I don't have it with me. If Mrs. Kramer has it, we could...
According to the website, it's Mr. McGlocklin, Mr. Basil, Mrs. Hamel, and Ms. Tordowski.
I thought there was another one, so it is Mr. Tordowski.
You know what?
And lastly, it seems as if, and somebody's gonna need to explain this to me, it seems as if the negotiations committee and the meet and discuss committee have redundant responsibilities, and therefore, and we have vacancies on both, and I propose that we merge the two committees, which would now be composed of Mr. Rathkev as chair, Mr. Basil, Mrs. Bytes, and Mr. Tordowski, and that would fill the positions on the merged committee.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason why we had split them in the past was certain board members had conflicts of interest, and were available from seeing both seats.
Any other comments on my suggestion?
Do I make a motion that, oh, wait, are we moving, are these all your suggestions? We're gonna move an item H?
Yes.
Okay, are you done listing them? Because I'll make the motion.
That's, I'm done listing them, yes.
Okay, I move item seventeen H.
Second.
Item seventeen H moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mrs. Bytes.
Okay, motion for seventeen H as presented, motion made by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mrs. Bytes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Bytes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. Martino, I have two other items under new business I'd like to discuss. The first item is the position of board secretary. I know, Mrs. Hamel, we accepted her resignation as a director, however, I do believe we also need to accept her resignation as board secretary, because there's not a requirement that you have to necessarily be on the board to be the board secretary. So if we don't accept that, I believe she continues to be secretary even though she's no longer a director. I believe that's my understanding.
That's a possibility, so...
I'm pretty sure when I wrote the email that I, I knew that was an issue, and I put in, I thought, board, director, and secretary.
Yes, Mrs. Hamel, I read that in your email, but I'm looking at the motion, and on the agenda, the motion is to accept the resignation of Monica Hamel, school board director, effective January seventeenth, twenty fourteen, so we never accepted the secretary part.
Okay, well, what you could do is, we had a prior discussion regarding the possibility of Mr. Basil filling that position, we can make, you know, I'm suggesting a motion to accept the resignation of Mrs. Hamel as board secretary and the appointment of Mr. Basil to fill that vacancy until that term expires.
I will move, so move.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion to accept the resignation of Mrs. Hamel as board secretary and appoint Mr. Basil as the board secretary, moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Basil. Comments or questions?
Eight, seventeen I. Seventeen I.
It would be seventeen I, yes.
A motion for seventeen I was made, made by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Basil. Mr. Basil?
Yes.
And Bytes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I have one other item. I know at our reorganization meeting, I brought up for the board the President's Volunteer Service Award, which would be a great way to honor our volunteers at no cost to the district. I was wondering if Dr. Sankar could provide an update on where that approval process stands with the administration, and if we need to make a formal motion to put that in action. I thought we approved it by pretty much consenting to it, however, I don't know if there's been any action taken. So, Dr. Sankar, can you please provide an update?
I wanted to look at a committee or an organization affiliated with the district to possibly take that on as one of their tasks that they do regularly, because most of the volunteers come out of the elementary level, and I have to put that into, I have to take the next step, and with all the delays and closings that we've had and holidays, I haven't had a chance to do that yet, but I still have...
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize somebody in the administration to fill out the approval form to become a partner. It's not anything too in-depth. I'm on the website, I've looked at the website, and I'd like to get this moving, and I don't want it to just be stagnating. It's a great idea, I think, and it should be free of controversy, so if we could just deputize somebody in the administration, I would like to move that we become a partner with the President's Volunteer Service Award at no cost to the district.
Hey, Connor, I'm sorry, Mr. Kurtz, would it be possible for you to share a link? I don't think I've seen anything...
Sure.
Then you mentioned it in December, I haven't seen anything about this, I thought you were gonna send something around to the board.
Oh, I'd be happy to send a link. I will do it after the meeting. Would we prefer, I guess there's no hurry to do this, we could wait till the next meeting, but again, I'm irritated, I'm speaking just as a board member about how slow things seem to operate, and this is something that could be done very quickly, but if we prefer, we could wait.
Mr. Kurtz, let me just say, I mean, I would like to just get a little bit more information about this, so we as a board are aware of what we're getting involved in, and are there any additional costs to this? Are there any administrative responsibilities that need to be tied up with this? I mean, I don't know anything about it. I think it's a good idea, but I think we should, if you could send us that information, I don't see any reason why, as a board, we can't review that.
We need to delegate on that.
And then, and then we could talk about it at the next meeting, and we can keep it on the agenda as a, as something, as a point of discussion, so it doesn't get lost from one month to the next.
And, and, Mr. Kurtz, seriously, as far as slow-moving process, I don't totally disagree, but I think it's incumbent on all of us then to provide the information right up front and then ask that it be placed on the agenda so we can discuss it and vote on it.
Okay. All right, well, I'd like to vote at the next meeting, so I will send the information and ask the board members, please, check it out.
Thank you, Connor.
Any other comments or questions? Presentations by the public on any issue?
One seventeen A, basically that is just a hundred, fifteen thousand dollars to get a superintendent.
That's correct.
What happened, just to put an ad in the paper and have some resumes come in? We're a dollar straight citizen, we really need to be throwing fifteen thousand dollars out of a budget unless...
Well, I think part of the effort of this is going to be to help qualify those candidates, make sure that those ads are placed in all the appropriate places. We also have resources that we don't have, rarely available, to go out and seek candidates that meet our qualifications, so, you know, the last time we engaged in this type of process, Mr. Templin, we, we had hired, I keep getting, it's not has, but it was cars, cars, and to assist us with that, I believe the cost was over eight thousand dollars to bring viable candidates to the board and help us with the interviewing process and the selection of a candidate. In terms of finding a CEO for a fifty million dollar organization, my personal opinion is fifteen thousand dollars is the minimum cost to the school district.
Mr. Templin, let me just add to that. We could put an ad in the paper and just get whatever local candidates happen to see that. I would like to have us, have a shot at the best available candidate, and I think this is a vehicle that we can do that.
We can't, we can't get papers like the New York Times, Villanelli Paper, whatever, all around our cases and mates, and put them in ourselves and expedite this amount of money? I mean, I don't know, it's a mint to business. I'm probably, I think, we're putting money out to spend more money on. And anyway, on sixteen, the House Voice over the roll call, I mean, and that's why we, we did this, I or yay, or put a hand up so the public can see who is voting for and against these.
That's what a voice vote is, Mr. Templin. All those in favor, Mr. Templin, that's what a voice vote is. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed nay. If there's no nays, then you know everybody voted aye.
Okay, but if there's two or three nays, then me here in the audience say, nay, did you see Nemo? That's what I'm saying. Did I see who's saying nays, and who's saying ayes? That's all I, I mean, you know, it's all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we raise our hands?
Yeah, absolutely. We've done it in the past, yeah, we've done it in the past.
I'd just like to add, you know, an executive, it's generally an expensive process, and to put advertisements, it's a big, big screen process that they're providing, fifteen thousand dollars. I too am a lot of sustained, I'm a bit of a non-involved, um, professor, I don't have the ability to...
Opposite, four or five kettle lane on the school, a couple things. First, do we have a deep, deep time for graduation with your husband's graduation? I guess it leaves time, maybe.
Mr. Hankel?
Mr. Hankel? We're preliminarily looking at, we are preliminarily looking at June the sixth, not as normal.
That's right.
Friday, June the sixth. The idea being family will be coming in for the weekend, it would be best to...
The other part of his question was location. The other part of his question was location.
Location, we hope to continue one in Alberta if we did it.
So you're, this is one in the thought process, how, how are you going inside your suits, you know, having, I guess more veil building than you have outside.
I couldn't hear you.
The thought process on why we move indoor and take away some double iron measures versus a padded outdoor, since they have our space in the morning, so...
The thought process of going inside is the same as last year, ten years past, it's weather related, also uncomfortable venue, you hear better, the responses we got last year from a lot of people were, it was the nicest graduation they've been at, you could hear all the speakers, they were closer to the students, their sons, their daughters, their family. We limited it to four or five tickets from family, we didn't hear any repercussions negative as the process went into spite.
So you said there were four or five tickets from there for, for...
We started at four, and then hopefully two were going to go to five, because they did some construction at Alberta.
Have we put a deposit down?
Excuse me?
Did we already put a deposit to hold the space?
No, it's just been simply, uh, for...
Mr. Smith, I had asked the same question, I was thinking in terms of cost, and, and the answer I got was, A, weather-related, and B, I'm told the sound system is not the best. Is that correct, Mr. Hankel?
Outside?
Yes. At our stadium.
Any outside venue unless you have a fantastic sound system, personally possible to hear. I was only a spectator at the outside graduations.
I could tell you, if you were sitting up there, one particular graduation we had, the valedictorian was up speaking, and on the far side of the field, people were shouting at her as while she was giving her speech, "We can't hear you, we can't hear you," and it was very disruptive for her and, you know, disconcerting, you know. I thought that the venue served very well at Alberta last year, and it was a much closer experience, I think, so as a parent, I mean, you're, literally, they were feet from their children as opposed to a hundred, two hundred yards away, I don't know, I thought it was a good experience. It'd be nice to have it out in our field, if there was some way that we could increase that intimate experience, but I'm not sure how we replicate that. I think last year, we decided as a board that regardless of whether it was at our field or at Alberta, we wanted to put down the deposit money and reserve that space, it was an option, and, and having feedback from the public on the experience there, so...
Yeah, and you've got the weather problem, too.
A couple concerns around the amount of change within the board, with lots of ex board members, superintendent, president, a lot of change at once, so speaking for myself, it just has concerns on continuity, the plans we have to get everybody together to mesh, to belt some type of reform with the public, any plans, or we just bring in folks on in and work on it?
Well, sorry to address that, I mean, let me just, I have some thoughts on this. So, one, whoever was president last year, me, hasn't gone anywhere, I'm still here, and, you know, Mr. Martino is the board president now, and whatever information that I can provide to the new board members, you know, we have those conversations, procedure or history or anything of that nature. So I don't think you've lost any continuity in terms of the board history as a board. We still have a lot of people in our administration who have been here through the good times and the bad times in one capacity or another, so I think there's still that, that history there. In terms of board members exiting versus staying, everybody, in my personal opinion, is everybody does what's in their best interest at the time, and this is a very demanding job. It takes more than sixteen or twenty hours a month, which is the average quarter by Basma. There are some weeks I spend twenty hours just focused on Daniel Boone issues. So, you know, for someone who needs to spend more time with their family or with their career, those things come first, and so I don't begrudge anyone for stepping off the board to, to, to address those items, and if they feel that they can't participate to the level that they want to, then, then if they want to get off and let somebody else step into their shoes who can put in a hundred percent, then I welcome that input. In terms of our business manager position being open, I'm gonna have to give a shout out to Mr. Boyer over there. In the six years that I've been here, he has been, he has done more to help this school district with its finances, with the business office and procedures than our previous two business managers combined. He's a very talented man, he knows what he's doing when it comes to the district finances. We are looking for someone with some, with some experience to fill that role, but Mr. Boyer is one of our considerations, or has been one of our considerations in the past for that post. In the interim, we have had, we've been very fortunate to have two very experienced men from other school districts sit in and mentor Mr. Boyer over the last six months and provide their insights and different methodologies for analyzing the finances of the school district, and we benefited immensely from that, and we will go forward and continue to look for business managers. We spent last year a period... We spent last year, a period of four or five months, interviewing business managers and potential candidates for that post, and found that lacking. So again, like the superintendent, we want to make sure that the person is there, is the best-suited candidate for that position, and will help further the school district to the next level. I think we have to be careful in who we choose, because the law has changed regarding hiring of candidates for these positions, whether it's superintendent, business manager, people are looking for three-year contracts, and so you don't want to pick the wrong candidate and have that person there for three years. And, you know, we have a lot of new board members that came on in December. I think as we got closer to that date and we were unsuccessful in finding candidates that met the requirements of the prior board, we deferred to allow the new board members to participate in the process, because we just thought it was very important that the new board members that are sitting here choose the person that they're going to be working with for the next four years. And I'm confident that the people that are in place now can handle any issue that comes up in this school district going forward. I sat on boards where we had board members that were, board members in name only, they would leave in the middle of a meeting to go watch a football game, or wouldn't participate in committees and other things, and the board functioned and got the business of the school district done. You have a group of people here that are diving in, and I say that in the best way, I mean, these new board members have been very aggressive in terms of getting involved as much as they possibly can in mechanics of being a board member, and I think it's a wonderful thing. I'm not in the least bit worried in terms of continuity and leadership in any of those issues. We've got the people in place to help us, and we're looking to get additional participants in this school district that can help take us to the next level, and we're going to be aggressive in that search.
Mr. Smith, let me just add briefly that the new board members, especially so many coming on at once, there are procedural things that we do need to learn. I don't think you were at the last meeting, the committee, the whole meeting, where I asked everybody to rise for the national anthem. There are semantics and procedures we do need to get a grasp on. As far as, as the issues, believe me, we have spent considerable amount of time in the past month and a half reading and discussing, and we have enough of a rapport with the more experienced board members that we can talk. We don't always agree, but we can talk, and the communications, I think, are good in that respect. And hopefully, the two board members that we're going to add will have the same relationship that these seven people remaining now have.
I'd just comment, if Mr. Smith has any ideas for how to establish better the pool with public, which I think was a lot of work to do, please get in contact with me, I'm very interested, or anyone, if you want to tell the ways that we can manage better. Thank you.
Angela Snyder, 604 East Third Street, First Row. First of all, I want to commend our students and teachers. I just thought it was really exciting to see the great team here tonight, and there is so much that is positive going on in this district with our students and our teachers putting in tremendous amounts of effort. We have incredible people, and I'm appalled and saddened by the amount of negativity that we get in this district, and I'm just excited, finally getting some positive public, you know, recognition, and so I'm very excited about that. In light of that, these students are our future, little ones to big ones, and I am extremely concerned, as I'm sure everyone here is, and you all are as well, or you wouldn't be doing what you're doing, that if we continue to provide the quality of education that has been here for many, many years. My husband loves this district, right away committed to my school. I wasn't sure about it when I was here, I'm a good old southerner, you know, I didn't know anything about this remaining, I didn't know anything about the way the school district run or anything, but I've been very pleased with the education my children have received here. This is coming from someone who had their children in homeschool for the first part of our time here, from 1999 to, I think it was 2002 or '03, and I want to see that continue, but this is not going to happen without some serious work on the budget and getting things under control, and I don't envy your position at all, I seriously don't. It's a very difficult position, you're not in, you know, you're kind of between a rock and a hard place, bad past board decisions, which are watering the bridge, we can't do anything about, and, and the economy and everything that's going on right now. I'm not a fan of the tax increase. You know, my family, that really hurt, okay? And I know that I don't stand alone when it comes to that. There are many families who are worse off than, than I am. I've got two in college and another one in a year and a half. So, you know, there are people who are far worse off than I am. And it comes down to that, though, do not increase taxes without doing some other work. There's got to be other sources of revenue, and, you know, I think of contractual partners, I know there was a lot of discussion and a lot of heated debate and everything over that last year. I hope that that has not just been completely tabled, I hope we will continue to work with and look to them for their help, because I know that, I'm pretty sure in my heart, that they really want to get that, and they really want to help. Also, Mrs. Hamel had some awesome ideas last year about some things that we could do to raise some revenue, some different things that she presented at one of the other committee meetings, and then she presented here, and I haven't heard anything about that, and the last thing I could get heard was that it was kind of pushed over to the foundation, but I haven't heard anything about how it's going with that. I would really be interested to know if any of those ideas have, have been explored any further than all the work that she did. I know she put a tremendous amount of effort into that.
Mrs. Snyder, I need to ask you to wrap up, because you're...
I'm sorry.
Well past the three minutes. Let me just address the last part of what you said. The ideas, and Mrs. Hamel did a tremendous amount of work last year, and those items that she was working on are not dead, there is still a revenue enhancement committee, it hasn't met yet this year, but it will, and we do intend to look at all facets of the budget before making any determination.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion by Mr. Basil, seconded by Mr. Kurtz. Thank you.
One of my mini-skills.
Which was?
I took care of it. I was a little disappointed when...